Okay. So, two signs, as you said, there's the highway sign and the pylon sign. Then you have the size of the highway sign is part of the variance course. That's the 567 square feet. And then the pylon sign is 35 feet tall and it is 100 square feet. So it's 100 square feet would be pretty standard for a convenience store or pylon sign. I suspect the BP sign is probably that size and not more, just from looking at it. And I haven't measured it personally, but I suspect that's about what size it is.
We don't have the information in here, but do we, does, is city able to delineate the frontage on that parcel?
Is that BP?
No, on this parcel.
We can try to crack it together off GIS. Which one, would you like to do the GIS or? I'm looking for the size of other signs, trying to find the old packet.
The GIS looks like if they, well, Martin, the north street, it's about 290 feet. And Martin on the west is about 334. And then Ash on the south is 302. And then the middle line is 396. About, I don't know, that's just GIS, so.
So if I did my math correctly, that's 926 feet of street frontage. So in the new ordinance that we're trying to get through, we get one 200 square foot sign for the first 200 feet of frontage. So that leaves 726 feet. If I remember correctly, we were working to allow additional signs for one square foot for every two linear feet of signage. So in what we are currently working through and trying to get passed, that would, 726 remaining feet would be an additional 242 square feet of signage. Oh, I hit the wrong number, didn't I? Thank you. 363. So, in what we are currently trying to get past, they would be allowed 563 square feet of signage total. And in that version of what we're trying to get past, no single sign would be over 200 square feet. So to put it into perspective, they're asking for a little bit more than what our new ordinance is in addition to being larger than the 200 square feet. I just wanted to share that.
Can I ask one other clarifying question?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. Is the proposed text amendment just for freestanding signs or for the entire site? Accumulative signage, all types of signage on the site, or just the freestanding signs? Because that would make a difference as well.
That was freestanding signage that we're discussing. So the other part of the, our ordinance that we're trying to get passed through is to allow these parcels that are larger or have more frontage to have more than one sign. And so, I don't know if you caught everything that I just mentioned. So for the first 200 feet of frontage, you're allowed a one-to-one ratio, one square foot per one linear foot of frontage. And then anything over 200 feet of frontage, you're allowed a two-to-one ratio. For every two linear feet of frontage, you're allowed one square foot of additional sign above that first 200. And so, we just did a quick calc. You've got about 926 feet of frontage. So, taking out the first 200 linear foot of frontage would leave 762 remaining linear feet. Divide that by two. That would, and then that would give you the total signage, square footage for your parcel under the ordinance that we're trying to get passed through.
Okay. I am not entirely sure when I initially put together the sign plan that I understood the difference between the freestanding sign maximum and the overall site maximum. Because we're discussing two freestanding signs here tonight and the maximum is 200 square feet. But then that doesn't account for any of the signs on the wall, for example, on the building or on the canopy of the fuel or something like that.
Yeah, the wall calculation is separate.
Okay, alright, good, okay.
You start from scratch again.
Alright, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I had that correctly.
Ms. Bassett, do you need some information off that report? I think Patrick's got it up.
So, all that information about other size signage in that area is in the March 6th packet. If you can manage to access the internet, sometimes it's a little spotty. They'll have tabs.
But if there's one specific sign, we can probably pull up the square footage. I think there was a, there was a report that kind of broke it down very briefly.
So the holiday end really isn't that big?
This has it at 216 and 55 feet from grade to top of sign. Assuming they built it according to the findings they submitted and we confirmed back then and all that stuff.
Is there more discussion or need a motion somewhere here? Do we have more questions for the applicant?
This might be better for me to bring up a little bit later when we're talking about the ordinances that we're working on. But it occurs to me this. If a parcel has a lot of frontage, but still, the largest sign they can have is only 200 square feet. Like for this one, they would be allowed to have 500, but the largest sign can only have 200. Then, if they wanted a second sign, they would, in order to use up their whole allotment, they would have to have like four signs, five signs. We may want to rethink that 200 number a little bit. Because if somebody has 900 feet of frontage and they're allowed 500 feet of sign, 500 square feet of sign, then to limit them to 200 square feet for the largest of those signs, they would have, they would either have a number of, you know, a whole bunch of signs, or they would have to waste some of their allotment, it seems to me. But that might be for discussion later when we talk about that again.
Yeah, I wish the timing were a little different because I would love to have brought at least one of these items we're talking about to fruition. But it is what it is. We are where we are. It does make me wonder, when we discussed the interstate sign overlay district, we focused pretty much completely on height. Because that's what we knew was a particular, because we knew what was, just what was presented here tonight, that in this scenario, these height differences between these parcels and the west side of the I-90 traveling on the west side of the exit versus east side is so different. So it makes me wonder if maximum size could have been a consideration there too. But that's, to stay with Lisa, that's a different discussion. But, so. It does make me wonder if continuation is possible here to allow us to work on that. Because I would have some trepidation about passing something. In particular, I'm still talking about that maximum sign height. It's not, I think the exhibits here kind of do illustrate something for me and I want to consider that more and discuss that more. But it's kind of difficult for me tonight to consider making that kind of a big change. At least that's where I'm at right now. Patrick, do you know offhand our limitation on billboard size?
Currently, we do not treat billboards any differently than we would a freestanding sign. We don't define them differently. Everything's a sign. Which effectively eliminates billboards unless they're pre-existing.
Here's, here's, here's my concern. I struggle with dealing with this as a variance, variance rather than waiting and letting, letting things happen through the course of action that we've, we've taken because of input that we've received from the I-90 Plaza developer, some other things that we're dealing with on some other sites in terms of height of signs. We're also addressing quantity of signs through the process. To just pass all three of these requests as a variance, I could probably live with the quantity and the height, but I'm going to get really hung up passing a 600 square foot sign variance. Because, doesn't matter, this, this, this particular parcel, to me, does not have a hardship for a sign size any different than anyone else trying to advertise to the public in any place in Brandon, whether they're on the interstate, off the interstate. So to say it's a hardship here, the next person, the next applicant can come in and say, he has a hardship because he wants to, he wants to advertise to people a mile up Holly Boulevard or a mile up Split Rock. And so, I'm, I, I have a hardship trying to wrap my arms around a sign that's three times bigger than what we allow, simply because of this location. There was a discussion in here about it's a hardship, there's a hardship because of the other like businesses. As you can see in the March minutes, all of those other similar businesses are surviving on a 200 square foot sign.
I'll make a motion to table this until we work through our current, current things that we're, we've already got on the plate here. And, once we get, I know the size isn't included in that, but once we get through those and see where things follow those, then we can work on the size. I'll make a motion to table it until we get through those.
No, I'd second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to table on, I guess, until we work through it, do we have some sort of a deadline for the, so that they have some? Are we talking that August date or do we want a date in there? We're kind of leaving them hanging.
Well, we do have general business freestanding signs amendment in one of our discussion items tonight where some of this might come up.
And the interstate overlay is, we're gonna, that's set for?
It's set for a public hearing. But my next question to you all is, would you like to pull that back and reexamine it?
I feel like we should talk more about the size that we might, that we might allow.
Because of the frontage, frontage issue, right?
Right.
Okay, so, you know, these folks are dependent on, on some of these decisions that we're making. So I think we need to be as definitive with them as possible so they can do their own planning. So, do we say the public hearing on the overlay district? I'm not sure what you want concluded before we decide on this variance. Is it the overlay district? Is it more than that? What, what are we going to need for you to feel comfortable deciding?
If we pull back the overlay district, we could add in on the overlay district additional signs with additional frontage. And we could do, we could discuss calculations with larger signs based on that too. So we could, we could wrap a lot of this into the overlay district. And then we could also do the additional signs in general business separately too. And have the overlay district, it may, may end up being more aggressive, I don't know. But we could, we could pull it back and have the size included in the overlay and additional signs included in the overlay based on frontage, like we're doing in general business. So we could, we could pull it back and include all of that. Thoughts on that?
I had the same thought that, based on what, some of the discussion here tonight, that perhaps a size component could be, because I, I think, I'm probably comfortable with the size we've discussed for the general business, but perhaps the overlay district could, in addition to the height, support a different size calculation too. Whether that could be done, because I know that some changes can be made upon the first public hearing, but I don't know if that would work in this case, but.
Well, we, yeah, I think planning zoning has just one public hearing, correct? And then city council has then two?
City, planning zoning has a public hearing. City council has a public hearing, first reading, then a second reading vote that isn't necessarily a public hearing. If people want to come in and talk about it during public comments, they certainly can. But there's not a designated public hearing time, usually at the second one.
So if we're pretty conscientious, if we table it tonight and we're pretty conscientious about our discussions, we might delay by a month? We could, what would be the, the least amount of delay that we could get by with? A month? Two meetings?
So, assuming the public hearing and the overlay district is the 18th, you can recommend changes before it goes to the city council. It depends on, is one meeting at a public hearing enough to hammer it out, do you feel? Because once it goes to city council, that's what it is. If city council would make changes, then it would come on back. That would be the way to keep it on track. Otherwise, you are, if we're already looking at effective dates, mid, late August, you're pushing September, early October. And I imagine Quick Start probably wants some kind of answer before October.
I think we can do that. Pull it back, discuss it one time, public hearing the next.
So no public hearing on the 18th? Or would you like to have this discussion at the public hearing and make changes then for the city council public hearing?
We can, I guess.
How much homework do you want between now and then at home?
We can do that if, worst case scenario, we can't come to a consensus and then we don't get it through that time. But I think we can. I think we're there.
A lot of the work is already done.
Okay, so to revisit the motion, if anybody remembers it, table.
And, so what's our timeline then? If we have a public hearing on the 18th?
Yep, city council would have its first reading, public hearing on the 7th. So conceptually, you could have a, we couldn't re-note it. It would have to be a continuation of the public hearing from the 18th to the 3rd. So potentially you could buy yourself a little time there. Since if it's a continuation, it doesn't have to be re-noted. But city council will be on the 7th, second reading on the 21st. Assuming it passes, it would go to the newspaper the 25th, publish the 30th, effective. I want to say without, you know, finger counting the numbers out, some, probably the 18th or 19th would be the effective date. What, if that, if the public hearing would have to get rescheduled, usually that pushes it off a month. So then you'd be looking at, instead of August 18th or 19th, you'd be probably looking at that time in September. Every time it gets pushed off, you lose a month.
So, I'm sorry, I'm not writing this down. So, the city council's second reading would be when?
July 21st.
And what would our next meeting be after that?
Planning and zoning's next meeting after July 21st would be August 7th.
Let's table it till then. If we don't have everything included in the overlay district, then we can start that discussion again and see where, where we go. But let's table it till then. That's my recommendation.
Do you have any input, Quick Start representatives, on a tabling of this discussion, whether to grant a variance until?
August 7th.
And I guess our position would be that we feel the public had a chance to comment on this item tonight, just as it would on the changes involved with the overlay district when that conversation takes place too. And so our preference would be that, you know, if this body isn't comfortable passing the variance, it'd be, please vote before council, so that you don't have to be the final approving body if you're uncomfortable with potential public feedback that people wasn't receiving tonight. But force your respects and as if you may, I can appreciate the opportunity of you to afford it today.
Okay, so we had a motion. Do we have a second? Brooks, okay, oh, Brooks seconded. We had discussion. Are we ready for a roll call vote?
I know that the applicant wants, would like a decision on their variance request. And if, if we table it, then there's no way they can get an answer before whatever, Labor Day-ish. Is that, if, if, if this motion goes through to table it until then, then they can't get an answer at all until Labor Day-ish. Is that correct?
So that's where ultimately, so the language of, the appeal says that within five working days after the filing of the Board of Adjustment's written findings, any person or persons aggrieved by any decision may submit a written request to the city council specifying the reasons for that the board decision has been modified, reversed, or vacated. So that is something where, say you all tabled it until August 7th. I would probably need, and if they wanted to pursue it faster, I would probably need to discuss with our city attorney whether they can appeal a decision to table, to the city council, who would then either send it back to you and say, no, you have to make a decision, or if they would uphold the table. We'd have to figure out what exact, if they could, if the decision to table is something that can be appealed.
So in the past, we have tabled items and it stays on the agenda. It, it kept showing up on the agenda every meeting.
We don't table it. We have tabled, yeah, we have continued things to the next meeting and then we, yeah. We haven't tabled it to a specific date in the future.
So my understanding with, with this request to table it, that is the deadline that we would give ourselves to make a decision. We could make a decision sooner or the applicant could request that we make a decision sooner, either all in or all out, or modify their request at a future date.
But if they would appeal it to city council and city council upholds, doesn't, doesn't agree with the applicant, then does that put them back in the six-month window?
It does.
And so that's a, that's a caution there too.
So just clarification on Mike's motion. Are you tabling to the date of the seventh or are you continuing, continuing at every meeting until the seventh?
We can, we can table it every, we can table it, so then we would be tabling it till the next meeting and the next meeting we continue to table. That's fine. I just, I don't know that until we get through with the overlay, we, I, I don't, I don't like making this decision when this is all of what the overlay is about. So we're rushing the process. It's just, we're, we're in the process. If, if we hadn't started it yet, but we're in it. We're, we're making these decisions. We've been discussing this for six months and we're ready to bring this to the community. And now we wanna kinda skip that. And it's, there's a lot of things here that we've been discussing. And so I think we're, by doing this variance, we'd be bypassing a big step. So we can table it to next week, next meeting, that's fine. And continue it, continue tabling it from there. Or we can just wait until the calendar says that we would be ready to make a decision outside of the interstate overlay.
Being respectful of, uh, Quick Star and their timeframe, sorta makes sense to amend the motion. Do you have a vote on it tonight? This, this Labor Day is not gonna work for them. Um, you can't open a store without a sign. And the purpose of the two signs is there's two different markets. On the west so, the west side store, ninety-nine percent of the traffic is east and west. This is two different, whole different markets. That's the reason the second sign. I understand the concern about the public, concern about this, public hearing, which is important. That's the process. I understand that. This is done years ago. We had surveys at neighborhood meetings and city council. The city made a huge commitment on TIF, the developer made a huge commitment. Go up and look, it's public record, but Quick Star paid for that lot. They made a huge commitment for this community. And again, you're doing your job. You guys do great work, but to sit here and have to fight for a sign, um, you know, do what you need to do, but one, another option is to amend the motion and vote on it and, uh, we'll, we'll play the hand we're dealt. Labor Day's not gonna work. Zach, Mike, Matt, Labor Day, that's just not gonna work. You can't open this, a store in the end of September, October with verification of a signage and Labor Day.
Uh, correct. It could potentially push our development out, uh, several years depending on if this is a lot of our construction schedule and to go find other projects that are already queued up or ready to go.
As I mentioned before, in my mind, um, approving a six hundred square foot sign opens the floodgates to any other parcel in town. The hardship on this parcel would be the same for every parcel in town. And, and this is in my mind. I'm speaking for myself. I'm not speaking for anybody else up here. Um, but it, it, to me, it opens up the floodgates that anybody, regardless of the size or location of their lot, um, simply saying because I wanna advertise farther, um, and get more attention. And everybody can bring that same argument. And so any parcel in, in town, we, we could fill this room with people wanting six hundred square foot signs and we wouldn't have any grounds to say no. So, um, I'll tell you right now, I'll, I'll deny this application.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Do we wanna stick with that motion or wanna stick with the motion? Okay, okay. So we're gonna call for a roll call, Paul?
Megan.
Nay.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna have a.
So if you.
I'm gonna say the name and we're gonna have a tally or.
Okay, the motion is to table it.
Yes, so a, a yes motion is to table. And my understanding would be, it would be tabled to the next meeting and then the next meeting you could table it to the next and down the line. So a yes is a motion to agreement with tabling. A no is a, I am against the tabling.
So, but they, from what I understand, they've kind of asked us not to table it and to just vote on it, correct? Yes. I thought that was the option they wanted, was us to vote, not table.
So, yes, here's what I'm, what I'm hearing is the applicant is, I guess I, I heard it from this gentleman. I haven't heard it from the applicant, but there, I, I wa, I wanna hear, are they okay with tabling it or do they, do they want a decision tonight?
We would prefer a decision tonight one way or the other and then have it move forward to council.
So I'm gonna say nay then.
Ms. Basset, you.
I am sticking with nay.
Brooks.
Aye.
Rob. Alyssa. Michael.
Doesn't really matter. I'll say nay, then we can vote on it.
Five nays to one yea.
Okay, I'll make a, uh, Hyde Brink, I'll make a motion to deny the application.
So a, a yes is to deny, a no is, you are in favor. You need.
I need a second. I need a second.
Can I ask a question now or do I have to wait for a second?
Well, get, let's get a second.
Okay.
Tote second.
Okay, now go ahead.
Okay, my question, and I think you were just gonna say this. So the motion is to deny. If we say aye, that means we're in favor of denying.
Correct.
If we say the nay, and if the nays win, does that mean it's automatically approved or does that mean what?
That means the denial fails. The motion to deny fails.
The motion to deny fails and then another motion has to come up, has to be made for.
To approve, cause you, you have to have an affirmative vote to approve.
Gotcha.
And then you could have discussion with conditions and things like that, so.
Say the name, we're gonna tally it. Megan.
Nay.
Brian. Brooks.
Aye.
Rob. Alyssa. Michael.
Aye.
So a, two thirds, you couldn't even get to seven. We've never run into this before. We're doing some math. Um.
So.
So even if Barb voted, you, say Barb votes, you, I guess either way. Say she, say she votes yea, you would have four to three. You still would not be at a two thirds. So we are at a deadlock.
So the second motion failed, so we're just back to no motion.
The motion did not pass. It was an even vote and you need a majority.
So i- if now we had a motion in front of us to approve and the vote went three to three and Barb votes same, same result, is that correct?
Correct. So we would then be here to, until we can get to four or I guess that's a continuance or however you'd like to play it at that point.
So until we have a motion that passes, the applicant can either choose to accept that or they can appeal that decision. If it's a final decision, either a recommend approval or recommend denial.
So my Roberts rules of order, pretty, pretty rusty on this. Okay, so the applicant is asking us for a decision. Not a table. So I hear some wanting to deny it and I guess I'm not sure if you're in favor of it because you voted nay on this last motion, but let's get a motion out there, one way or the other.
Rere looking at the text, what the language says is the concurring vote of two thirds of the members of the Board of Adjustment shall be necessary to approve any variance. So conceptually, if you voted three, three, that's not an approval, but it's a motion. So it could constitute a denial. Unless, because the language is, you need two thirds to approve.
You're proving the denial, so I'm not sure. We are proving the denial. You're proving the vote. So I, I think, I would say it's still a vote. You'd have to still have, I don't know, maybe not, but.
Read that, what you just read.
So the language in the code says the concurrent vote of two thirds of the members of the Board of Adjustment shall be necessary to approve any variance. So to approve, you need to, you can't get to two thirds.
Then the.
So a failed.
I know what I'm thinking, but I can't.
So a failed motion to approve is a denial. We've had that happen. That didn't get two thirds and we've had that, I think, and that's been a final action. So is it, is this, is this one the same?
Unless with that knowledge, someone wants to motion to reconsider and then with that knowledge, offici, officiate the vote, I guess. With that understanding that you would need four to approve anything less than that. Conceptually, based on that language, is it a denial?
Or some of those that wanted to or that were against the denial, they could make a motion to approve it with or without conditions and then we could take a vote. And if they don't get it, then it's denied.
Yes, you would not re, reach the two thirds necessary to approve a variance.
In the interest of time, Hyde Brink, make a motion to approve.
Showing him in second. Can I add some conditions to that? Or can I amend the motion and we can get a second on that? I can, I can make an amendment, right? We can have discussion after the vote.
Hold my motion.
I would say if we're going to prove it, I would do it with the conditions that we allow the ninety feet because of the hardship of the, the topography. Um, we're still working on figuring out our additional signage and we have said that we wanna discuss additional square footage for the sign. So I would, I would say for this variance, I would only allow the height at this time and would not allow additional square footage at this time or additional signage. We'll work that out. That would be my motion or amendment.
Hyde Brink, second.
Okay, so you're, um, just, you're just dealing with the, the height issue at this point.
All right, how does that affect? How does that affect the variance request? If the applicant still would like the other two things and they are, if only one third of their variance request is approved and they still wanna pursue the other two thirds, do they have to wait six months?
They would have the option to appeal what would be a denial of the other two thirds to the city council.
Okay, so we've got motion and a second to approve the variance for the height of the sign, not dealing with the size or the second sign. Is that correct? Okay.
Megan.
Nay.
Brian.
Aye.
Brooks.
Nay.
Rob.
Nay.
Alyssa.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
So we are at the three to three, so that motion does not pass. So all three aspects of the variance have failed.
Okay, so their option is to appeal to city council.
Correct.
Or.
So to appeal, you need to provide city staff with a written notice that you would like to appeal sometime in the next five business days. So that can be, if you wanna send us a letter, if you wanna just send us an email, it doesn't have to be anything particularly formal. Just say that you wish to appeal the Board of Adjustment' decision. You have to specify the reasons why you feel that decision was incorrect. And then the process goes from there and it gets scheduled as a, an appeal public hearing with the city council. Correct. The city council doesn't get to consider new things. They would look at what was presented today and that is what they consider.
And the next city council meeting is the sixteen, correct?
Correct, but it has to be, I believe, noticed and all that fun stuff. But we will, we will check and if they choose to appeal, we will figure out a date and a time and let them know as soon as we can.
Okay, moving on. Marwin?
Sure.
I know it's complicated. Thank you for your time. Appreciate that. You're good at work. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks, Marwin. Okay, we're on to discussion items. Sorry, folks. Um, come on up, Mike. Damon. Oh, we need to go back into planning and zoning. Okay, we need, thank you. All right, so we need to adjourn Board of Adjustment. All in favor?
All right.
And reconvene. And reconvene planning and zoning. Do we need a motion for that? No, we're just here, okay. Okay. The Coughlins are finally up. You guys want to come on up and just give us a little information?
Thank you for being patient.
Yeah.
My name's Mike Coughlin, twenty-two seventeen South Split Rock Boulevard. Oak Ridge Nursery, I guess. So, what we've been trying to do is build a I guess, a residence on our property, a second residence, that we have sold our home to our youngest son, which would be moving back here and probably be involved in somewhat of business, along with Oak Ridge Nursery, some different aspects of it. So we, Robin and I, want to build just a small villa with a larger kind of a chouse. And I know that isn't really allowed in the city of Brandon, so going through Paul back in August of twenty twenty-four, we sat down and talked about some things, and Paul said, uh, our internal staff met in regards to what I asked to do, and so he says, to begin with, a rezone for the residential portion would be required. And right now, I think our whole property is general business, which it has been from day one, I guess. Even though our residence is there too. So that was one of the requirements that he had asked us to do before we start building or anything, so we have done that, Aaron has done a replat for us, and, um, it's waiting for final approval, I mean, it's all been approved, I guess, everything, we have four different parcels out there, the general business, Oak Ridge Nursery, our older residence, and our newer residence is going to be kind of in its backyard, so and again, it's just going to be kind of a villa with a bigger shop, but it'll be considered a one residence too. So that has to meet all our requirements that you have for residential housing. So that's, um, so we, we got the very, or the replat done. He says for R one residential zone, a detached accessory structure, we decided not to do that because of, because it was a limiting factor that we couldn't live in it, so that's the reason we replatted and are going to build another house, I guess. So we did the subdivide residential portion, so everything that he had listed here, that we've, we've taken care of, and, uh, you know, following the rules, and yet, we still have not been able to get a building permit. We have proper setbacks, we have some hoop houses on the property that are included on the new plat, but they're part of the nursery, so we wanted to get started with footings and so forth, and these structures will be gone. You know, we need them right now, obviously, they're full of plants and so forth, but they can either be relocated or rebuilt or something, but we're trying to get, get started with footings and so forth before another year is gone, so. Questions, I guess, or that either one of us, Damon, my son, Aaron was with survey company, Norman, so we have just so everybody knows, I'm kind of part of this project, so I'll probably recuse myself from any voting when it does come.
Damon Coughlin, eighty-six ten East Sunset Circle, Brandon, South Dakota. I think the main thing that we're looking for is we're, it's all one piece of property, we're trying to split it up, so it can be nursery separated, house separated, the new house separated, and there's a little piece on the end, that's more of a for future Oak Ridge, that's where the state is deeming our highway access, so trying to take care of that little piece right now. Getting everything to fit with existing buildings sometimes is tricky. Um, I think that's where we're running into issues right now, to get the required setbacks and everything for their part that they want to build in that lot. Um, and just trying to figure out a way to be able to do that, again, with existing buildings, knowing that a lot of those greenhouses down below are going to disappear, I'd say by, hopefully, June of twenty-seven, those would go. They're not really permanent structures, there's no footings to them, they're gravel floors, they've got pipes with about two foot of concrete, deep is it. They're metal hoops with sheeted plastic over the top, so nothing's really permanent there. So yeah, I guess it's just trying to get everything fit in there if we can, to allow them to get started with uh, the shop part and footings and the residence down there.
So we've got it as a discussion item for plan development, so what does the commission need to talk about?
So, as staff, we have pored over this quite at length, this last week, we probably met, was it hour, hour and a half-ish? Trying to figure out how it works, because in general business, you can't have a house, so the existing house is non-conforming, then to add another house, then you have to, then you would subdivide it, then the problem there is subdividing it, you could potentially create spot zone issues, because then you have R one that's just created on its own, separate from any other R one, arguably, then you have access issues, where quite mutual access, you we have issues with so detached accessory structure, if they were to start the house as just the detached accessory structure to get started, your sidewall heights are limited to ten. They are looking for taller than that, so that's, that prevents just getting started that way on the house, and then once the buildings were removed, you know, you slice up the line, and some of the issue is we, in a plat, you don't approve it if you create non-conformity, so we've worked our way around it, and kind of what we've come to is the best way to do it with spot zoning concerns and other things, to do it as a plan development, where it's designed around what they want to do specifically. We, as, at a city level, we don't have any issues with what they want to do, it's just a matter of making a the code work for it, because there's the whole chouse thing as well, and we're trying to find a solution to the issue, and a PD seems to be...
And the issue with the chouses is that there's more garage than living areas at the...
That's not the way the plan is going to show.
That hurts.
We saw that, because we're not going to allow chouses.
Yep, so the ch- the chouse isn't the issue, the only issue is that you're putting a building
Next to, too close to, sorry, too close to those greenhouses or hoop houses that are there right now. It's kind of the issue right now.
So, so if I understand this correctly, um, you want you want to separate the existing house from the business?
Yes.
And build a new house, um, south of the existing three greenhouses, is that right?
Yes.
And that three greenhouses are going to come down?
Eventually, they will come down.
After this season is done?
Um, probably the next, till we can get relocated, so.
Oh, okay, so you could rebuild that?
We'll take them.
That function somewhere else, okay. Um, I guess, why can't? I guess, I don't, I don't see this as a spot zone, I mean, this is a, this is a corner, a very sharp corner of the edge of city limits of Brandon, without development on any other side, so we don't know what's going to happen in the future on the other three sides of it. Also, spot zoning or not, that's what, to me, that's what the current use is, a residence and a business, so I mean, are we, are we trying to hide what's happening now? I don't, I don't know. Would it be possible to separate off the area where you want to build the house as residential?
We've already done that, yes.
Oh, so that's not what we're seeing there?
It's already been replatted.
We've tried that, but with, uh, going through for their ordinances and whatnot, with those greenhouses there, that plat would have to go through the center of those hoops that are eventually going to go away. I don't know if you have, I do have that with me.
So the plat before this one kind of had this point connecting over. And the greenhouses are kind of half and half. So this point extended over, and the greenhouses are kind of here.
It's coming down to a timing thing, that they want to build, they want to build the house before the greenhouses are down.
We want to get the footing started for everything to begin with, and then we, we would build the shop part of it first, because the walls are taller where the villa attaches to that sidewall. Plus, we're needing a place to live. Because we have to be out of the house in June fifteenth or so.
They're not going to let dad live in the basement?
No, they won't. Well, the son might, but I'm not sure about Ms. Jamie. No, I, it's not a problem, it's just, we would rather be comfortable getting started with what we're and it will be our system living down the road, so basically, you're going to see a lot more of this happen, and, and it's happening all over in Omaha, and you know, we're just a little behind here yet, but it's, even the county now has approved chouses and so forth.
I've always hoped somebody would come in and push for a development where we have owner occupied dwellings and businesses for some of these startup, you know, small contractor companies, things like that. Because it's hard to, as a startup business, to make payments on a house, make payments on a business, and so...
And if you aren't familiar with the nursery lot, we have about forty acres out there that we own. And so our next closest neighbor is probably, I don't know, probably two blocks away, I suppose, something like that. So we, we have kind of our own little, and we have had for, for forty-seven years, we've lived there. And I'm not sure why we're in the city, but we, we are, because they changed the road, and now we're kind of separated, and, uh, we're, we're meeting all the codes that the city has, the setbacks, the twenty-five foot setbacks, and the only one we're running into is a twenty-five foot setback, I think, the rear part of it, which is the green, the hoop houses, which are, again, very temporary.
Does it being a temporary structure, is, is there any way that the city looks at that as just being temporary, or is it, a structure's a structure kind of a thing?
For the most part, in that case, a structure's a structure. If you consider them accessory structures, then a line would separate that. We've seen a lot of structures that, not saying that will happen here, but people promise they'll go away, and they don't. Paul pursues them every day.
It has nothing to do with footings or not, footings, frost footings or not, it's a building, a structure.
You know, and if we needed to change the, the plat, I mean, that's an option, I guess, is to continue that. Aaron would have to redo it, continue so the greenhouses are all part of the plat. What would it be, three?
I don't think you could have that much accessory building on residential. If you included them in the residential as part of it.
Yeah, I guess they're, they're so, they're so temporary, I mean, they, they throw them up in the parking lots, the Ace Hardware, that's exactly what it is. And they take them down, that's what we have.
Even a, even a garden shed, though, you can only have one access, even a garden shed, you can only have one garden shed in residential, so that doesn't solve the problem?
It seems like a lot of work to accomplish what you want to do, um, to go through a plan development, is it, is it possible that we could we could do this with a variance, so that they wouldn't have to go through the work of going to a plan development?
We, we could, we talked about that, and to grant the variance, what aspect of it wouldn't be self-inflicted? We spent a lot of time trying to could, because no one has an issue with it, it's just trying to our code doesn't necessarily, it's, it doesn't line up perfectly. So we're trying to find the way to get it through, and so they can ideally get started as soon as they need to.
Is there any way that you could...
Plan development, of course, being a, you know, a whole sixty to ninety day process obviously isn't perfect for that, but...
Is there any way you could move the new building site south of the driveway there?
Uh, that's where we started, our son would prefer it not over there, it fits so well. Because, you know, eventually, it's going to be his, I mean, we're going to build it, we're going to live there, it's going to be a separate plat. You know, it's not intended to be for sale at any point in time, you know? So it'll be his building, and, you know, the big shop part of it and so forth, and he might have, you know, a say, some future, you can do a, not really a rental, but just a extra bedroom and so forth for guests, and so, guest house basically is what it is.
But it'd be on a separate parcel, so he could do
Right.
whatever he wanted with it.
And we, we've already talked, the utility people have been there, so we're doing separate water, separate utilities, again, that was something Paul said that we would want to have, which we are, we are doing. We are on rural water, um, and septic system, our existing house anyway.
So this is a recommendation from staff, or this is a discussion item, or?
So the recommendation from staff was that a plan development is the easiest approach, because we can write it for them, we don't necessarily have to jam it in here, we can write a solution for them.
And you folks were okay with that? You, you folks are okay with that?
The plan depends on the timing. I mean, is this out another two, three, I mean, we've been dealing with this well over a year since August last year.
So a plan development would be a creation in the zoning ordinance, and that would take roughly sixty to ninety days. And we talked about that, the reason why we're discussing it here is because the plan was in order to keep them moving, we would have to hammer out the plan development right now, and then get it scheduled for a public hearing as soon as it could get scheduled for one. So this is kind of the shot at it. If that's the route you want to go. Because we also don't want to keep you waiting, we, we understand that we don't want to put you out, and you have to go somewhere else for sixty days or wherever, we we want to keep it moving for you as well.
We do allow some living quarters in general business, right, or just?
If they are above the first floor of the general business. There. I believe so, we can take a look, but I, I believe so, I think neighborhood business just allowed the dwellings to be large, I think.
I, I think we're getting way too complicated, it's, you know, this is a simple, just a simple request. I mean, we want to build a house, we've done everything you've asked us to do, we're going to have separate utilities, it's a separate house, totally, everything meets code, the only problem is, we have some greenhouses that would interfere with a setback, the building will sit right there, we can build it right now, all we have to do is remove the greenhouses in a, a time period which suits Oak Ridge Nursery. We need the greenhouses to grow things, that's our livelihood.
So in neighborhood businesses, your dwelling options are owner occupied dwelling unit, first story, ground floor, owner occupied dwelling unit, first story, non-first story, ground floor, but they are in the same building as the business. So there isn't a separate dwelling on the same lot option?
Can you attach it to the greenhouse?
To get around the sidewall height thing, what we talked about was, is there, so you have your accessory use and your definition of a principal use? Is, so where do you draw the line with business, is, is, so if they built it as a storage building for the business, is a storage building for the business fundamental or essential to it? If that's the case, are there just no... If that's the case, are there just no general business accessory units? Or accessory buildings? You could say everything's part of the principal use? So, yes, I agree. The problem is to some degree, the driveway's location is what it is. It doesn't prevent you making a longer strip away from the greenhouses and the placement of the greenhouses that will likely go away at some point. But right now, we can't approve a plat if there's something crossing a property.
Okay, so if, if this is coming from staff and it's also coming from the owners of the property, do we just not like planned developments or what? I, I guess I'm wondering what, what the issue is.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Not to make it more complicated, but these are the questions that came up in my mind.
Nope, we're here to hammer it out.
All right. What's a shouse?
The shed shop portion is either a larger footprint, but in most cases also taller than the house. But not always. It's usually the footprint of the garage or shop area is larger than your house. So the shop is the principal and the dwelling is the accessory to that. So it's kind of the flip.
Okay, so it's a house and a shop that are attached to each other?
Correct.
But the shop is bigger than the house?
So it would be, say you have a-
Not in this case.
Not in this case?
No.
Okay.
We are under code, our square footage of our house is one, well, probably twenty square foot bigger than the shop. So that's code.
Okay. So that's one question I had. Is the shop gonna be part of the business?
No, no, it's a separate residence. It's a, it's like building a brand new house.
Right, okay.
And, and we met every code we have to meet.
So if I used, if I used my garage as a shop and called it a shop instead of a garage, be the same difference?
Basically, yes.
I didn't know if you were putting up something that was gonna be part of the business?
No, it's, it's our, it's our retirement home is what we're building.
Sweet.
The main issue on it is just those greenhouses are, it's timing.
Yeah, yeah.
If the greenhouses were gone, everything would be fit and be fine. It's just those greenhouses are in the way. But we can't quite use them, get rid of them.
A detached dwelling isn't a use in general business. We can't plat off the residential lot because something's crossing the property line. So then that portion can't be rezoned.
All right, my other question, as to a septic tank. You said the, the main house uses a septic tank, right? So would you need another one for the new? Does our, does our codes allow brand new? When I was on planning zoning before in the nineties, it didn't. So I don't know if it's still the same or not.
It does if we cannot provide services to the property. If we can, they wouldn't be allowed to put one. The existing ones, so say they have one and then we somehow get to them. They are allowed to keep it until it fails.
But under current city code, they're allowed to put a new one in?
Correct. We are unable to provide them city services.
Yeah, 'cause I remember when they couldn't and I just didn't know if it was still that way or not.
On Ironwood Street, I couldn't because there are services there, right? But, yeah.
Yeah.
You said light industrial, you are allowed residential. How much living area are you allowed in?
I was just looking, even under general business, as a CUP, owner occupied dwelling unit, first floor, dwelling unit shall occupy the lesser of thirteen hundred square feet or twenty-five percent of the building footprint. That's in GB. That was, I think it's similar to LI and HI.
What is the square footage of the house?
Uh, the one we're building? I think it was like almost sixteen hundred square feet, sixteen hundred.
It's half again as big as my house.
It's handicapped accessible, so everything is bigger than.
And what is, what's light, what's light industrial?
Okay, so under LI, owner occupied dwelling unit, still thirteen hundred square feet or twenty-five percent of the building's footprint for, for LI. For owner occupied dwelling unit. I think that goes back to what Mr. Heidrich's comment was, trying to provide someone who wants to start a business to be able to live in there potentially with these limitations to start out without having a mortgage and a business. Would you agree to that, Brian?
I was just, with the number of buildings, I was wondering if this wouldn't actually fit more in light industrial than it does in general business? And I don't know. It'd be easier to rezone it than to do a PD, but. Is there any way that you could build it with three hundred square feet not finished now? And then when you move the greenhouses, you finish out the other three hundred square? I don't know, I don't know what your floor plan is, so I don't know if that's.
Yeah, I mean, we, we really wanna get the, kind of the bigger garage and so forth done, so and then we'd, we'd frame it all in, everything, but probably finish the villa gradually.
Yeah, 'cause if you finished your main living areas and two bedrooms instead of three or whatever, you know, if you left, if you could leave three hundred square feet of it, so you only have thirteen hundred square feet finished, then it might fall in the light industrial and with the number of buildings you have there. 'Cause how many buildings are allowed in general business? You can only have one accessory building, right? So so this might almost be a a better fit as light industrial, and then we just have to do a rezone instead of writing an ordinance. It's still gonna take time. It's all gonna take time.
But as, as he mentioned, that would allow you to, you know, if you ever wanted to tear down, add additional greenhouses, put up additional accessory structures, you could do that, whereas keeping a general business, you'd, you'd probably have to go, or even a plan development, we'd either have to incorporate something in here that allows additional accessory structures or, you know, it, it would give you more flexibility down the road with, on the business side of things, not just the house side of things, so. And I, I think, you know, if, if someone wants to bring up the spot zone, this is a very, this is an isolated parcel, so no matter what we zone, whether it's residential, whether it's business, whether it's, you know, it's, it's isolated to itself, so to me, it gives us more freedom.
And if you're going to expand to the west, you could, if you have this under light industrial, you could expand to the west under that zoning a lot easier. And I think that would be a lot more suitable.
'Cause even just on the plans right now, I mean, there's six, eight buildings that would be with, if a greenhouse structure counts as a building for a nursery, we gotta have six, eight buildings easily.
For a rezone to light industrial, the thing that would unlock the most would be storage units just out of the schools. Storage units are an LI and HI use for future development purposes.
So, so it would, it'd be a big problem because it's near a school? Is that what you said?
Potentially. Some people would argue that. I'm not. I'm just saying that unlocks that use and what's, what's around the schools has been a sensitive topic recently.
Well, it unlocks it to every permitted use, once you allow, yeah, so it's, you know. I agree with Patrick, but it opens up a whole can of worms.
And I understand that, but it's non-conforming under its current use. And so if they wanna expand, they're non-conforming, that's gonna be tough. And so I understand it unlocks other uses, but they're not conforming currently, so.
This is something too, as Brandon expands and you expand city limits and whatnot into these places where people have homes and farm buildings and all this stuff, and all of a sudden they get zoned around there, then we're gonna have to figure out how to deal with them. Because you can't just, well, if this is what you are, now we're gonna zone you this. They wanna add on it because of existing buildings that were already there before they were in there, now they can't do anything.
Rob, I know you're involved with this and you said you had to recuse yourself, but do you have any comments that you would like to make? I don't wanna put you on the spot. I guess I am, but.
There is purposes for that. It's gonna keep coming up, I think. Yeah, we, we're allowing it in light industrial for industrial uses. I, I wanna see us start to do that for retail and general business.
Especially for the younger generation, I think, with trying to start a business. I think it's difficult to own a house and run a business.
Didn't we do that for neighborhood business? Didn't we allow the?
But we, but the stipulation has to be above it.
Okay.
Not on the same level.
Okay. So that's something for discussion.
It's Aaron Norman, Norman Engineering, six-two-two-one, he's silver maple circle. Question for staff, I guess, we talked earlier this week, we threw a lot of darts at the dartboard and nothing was quite hitting, kinda like we're talking tonight. But just kinda where we're at tonight, next steps, we got a plat, revised plat on the table here. Are we looking to rezone plat first then rezone? Can they go concurrently? What are our next steps, timelines, keep this thing moving? Are we gonna go right to the plan development?
So there are, to rezone, you have to rezone a defined something. We either rezone based off a platted lot or a means and bounds description. We can't just, someone throws a green blotch here and a purple blotch next to it, you know, we have to figure out where the line is. It's, we need some kind of measurement. So they could probably go concurrently. Van Buskirk's one we dealt with earlier where they kind of figured out how they wanted to zone, then they filed a plat, but.
But that's also a minor plat. So when we've been doing it in developments, it's a minor plat, so we don't have the easement shown, we don't have the right of way dedicated. A minor plat's very different than what they're trying to do here. I think if they wanted to plat now, it needs to meet their current zoning. Yes. Yeah, we right. Right, we would, we could still review the plat and everything and have it ready to go. So once the ordinance takes effect, they can file it that day. Well, plan development and a rezone both take ninety days.
So the quickest it could get into the paper, if you polished off anything today, would be the eleventh. So then you add the ten days and you pass the nineteenth. So it would be the third of July would be the quickest. Either a PD or those rezones would take the same amount of time. Yes. Usually the plan development moves through the process concurrently with the rezone to it. So it would take the same amount of time. It would just be two parts moving together instead of one moving by itself.
Light industrial you're talking about? So what other, I'm just thinking from the public's point of view now. Light, light industrial right next to the school, what might go in there someday? What's, what's allowed in light industrial?
So the land north across Sioux Boulevard, we see development plans for it. One thing at staff level we've talked about is they have some interest in that being industrial. This land being industrial loses us an argument that it wouldn't be on its own.
'Cause is, again, I, I don't wanna make it more complicated for you, but isn't cannabis one of the things that's allowed in light industrial?
Wholesale trade, light manufacturing, contractor shop, storage, office, public utility. Yeah, but when I was, do you wanna know permitted or conditional? Or all of them? So public utilities, frozen food locker, wireless communications, printing plant, motor vehicle service station, electrical substation, warehouse, mini warehouse, lumberyard. These are permitted uses. Retail trade, motor vehicle sales, motor vehicle body repair, motor vehicle service stations, truck or bus wash, farm store, farm implement, farmer's market, contractor shop. Then the CUP is the medical cannabis amongst some other ones.
Yeah.
It's quite a list.
So we, we just had a room full of people uh, speak up against a cellphone tower. And then if we rezone the land right next door to the school as light industrial, where a cellphone tower is a permitted use.
What, if we did a-
There might be some.
In light industrial, a cell tower is still a conditional use, just clarification, yes.
If we did a PD, what, how would we, would we classify this business? How do we, how do we classify that differently and still allow them to grow and do the things that they need to do?
Starter draft in the packet is of course our first thrown together thing. I think we talked on Tuesday and I threw together a draft in about three hours. So that's what's in the packet. It, it adds the house to the business lot and has some stipulations on the house. To make the house a standalone house an acceptable use with the business. And this has it as owner occupied, but that doesn't necessarily have to be the case. It's just a starting. And that would, with the separation distance, I think building code we said was ten feet?
I think the zoning code is ten feet.
Okay. Okay, so if, and we talked about if they shifted the house down, there's five feet currently separating on the plan the house from where the greenhouses are. If they shifted that down five, they would meet the ten. And they wouldn't have to necessarily replat it right away until the greenhouses went away, because the house would be allowed to be built because the uses would work. And then if the greenhouses went away, they could draw a line on the map and make it a separate lot if they wished to do so. So that's what that attempts to do. So I guess if, if, if we go the plan development route now, it, the way it's drafted right now, retail trade or service, well, what, we don't have a description of what service is. And then how do we get over the, how do we, how do we address the multiple buildings? So the def, so the principal use includes everything fundamental or essential there to it. Unlike a single family house, which is confined to one building. Unlike a single family house, which is confined to one building, it recognizes that a a retail service or trade can occur across multiple buildings. Like an apartment complex, most are not just one standalone building, if you look down at Belco's, I think there's twelve, but that's still one use. That, that's where they got the thirty-six plus.
Why don't we just call it what it is, why don't we just say a house and a nursery?
We could, if you wanted to be specific, certainly could.
You guys sell the business or the property, the next guy that, he's either gonna do a nursery, or he's gonna have to come in and change the zoning. I mean, let's, let's, let's just call it what it is, I mean, it's, it's a nursery, and we want to put a house on it. And then, that way, we don't have to deal with people thinking, oh, well, what might possibly go in next to the school? It's a nursery or nothing? Yeah, so right now it just says retail trade or service, well, that, that leaves, that leaves it open to interpretation of what might possibly go in. If we just say it is a nursery, and then, like I said, if they quit the business, or they sell the property, it's either gonna be, they're gonna have to come back in and then readdress it at that time, and it's not up for question.
I might add, we need to, I mean, lot two, um, you know, that, that plat needs to be done so my son can go and get a loan to Coles. And I, I mean, there's, there shouldn't be too many questions on that, I don't think, it's just.
So the house on lot two, if it was subdivided, it wouldn't create a nonconforming, because the house is already nonconforming, so a subdivision there, it would all depend on whether the bank be willing to give a loan on a nonconforming structure. Because right where it's situated, it meets setbacks, it's just the use, is the problem, so it wouldn't create the nonconformity, because it exists. Correct, correct.
But that would be a rezone.
It would, if it was subdivided off now, when it was still GB, the house could stay and all that junk, it would just be nonconforming, but if it was rezoned to-